He's having a hard time.
Can do it one time.
Avoiding the, avoiding the conversation. I mean, she's been, she's been living what, two months? It's six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. A lot of people here today. So it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the legal authority which with them has one nation, and to the freedom of justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone to, for attending our February 2nd Select Board meeting. We have three Select Board members with us on Zoom. Can you guys all hear us? Lee, Lee Gustafson, Lee Dakin, and Heather Chase. All clear and loud?
Yes, sir.
I can hear you.
Good to hear.
The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our January 19th Select Board meeting. No one wants to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve minutes from that.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second it.
And Lee Gustafson's is second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything on the minutes? Does anybody have anything?
I have one already. Page five, line three, it says, "Lee felt they were putting them in an awkward petition." I think that should be position.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor of approving the minutes with the correction, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No. Next item, citizens' comments. If there's someone here or out in Zoom land that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Does anybody have any citizens' comments? You might make it seven. And Julie, can you take us through our next item, which is old business?
I can. There's not a lot. Regarding the, some of the junk properties we have in town, I am working with regional planning on a program that is out there investigative at the moment. It would be obtaining some Brownsfield dollars to perform a phase one environmental study on two properties in Chester. I have not reached, I have not been able to connect with those property owners yet, so I really don't want to say where they are, but they're two of our most egregious properties. And they're two properties that would be going up for tax sale also. So, multiple years of delinquency. This program through the state uses Brownsfield dollars to pay for a phase one environmental study to identify if there's any hazardous material on site. Then we would have an agreement that we sign with the state. Again, got to read through, got to get it vetted with through Jim, but that would then allow the town to purchase the property at tax sale, clean up the property, and then resell it. The resale price would include the cost of the cleanup. Hazardous materials would be paid through this specific grant program. So, it may be an interesting tool. Again, I've got to read through the agreement. If you do it, if the timing is right, there is no liability to the town. And the phase one study is what identifies, you know, what material is on site. But to do the phase one, you know, the property owners need to sign off and, and so there's some work to be done, but just kind of keeping you in the loop at the start of this, it's a new thing. Town of Windsor has apparently done it twice now, so I'll be talking to Tom Marsh and see what his experience was. But more to come. Just wanted to kind of get that out there.
Well, that's, that's an interesting program. That would help to get a property back on the tax roll to be paying taxes.
Exactly. And it's a method to get them cleaned up.
Julie, can I just ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
When, when those were the circles I used to travel in, I know that the phase one was a fairly limited cost and also limited in scope as, as far as determining what needed to be done.
Yep.
Normally, the process is that somebody does a record search, they go to the property, look at, take a bunch of pictures or whatever, but they don't actually collect any samples to do anything. And then it would go to, the report go back to the town. The town would say, well, so what are we in for, for cleanup? And that would be a phase two investigation where samples would be collected, et cetera.
And that's where the state comes in and starts to pay the bill. Correct.
But as far as I know, it used to be there's a $10,000 upfront payment by whoever the, was taking on that property, that money. So I don't know if you heard anything about that, but it'd be worth asking that question.
I think that's the new piece to the program, Lee. I think there has been funding that helps towns with that part of it, so that that upfront cost is covered.
Okay.
But those are some of the nuances I need to kind of filter through. Before we take any steps. And I need to have the contract that we would have to sign vetted through Jim first. Couple things in there that I'm a little concerned about, but I want Jim to get his eyes on it before we go much further.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And if there's anything I can help with, let me know. It used to be my wheelhouse.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
You have a question on that?
Hang in a second, Bill. Go ahead, Lee. Lee Dakin.
I was just wondering, Julie, I'm wondering if, if anything has been, you know, looked at on the 103 South property that's still being used?
Yeah, I talked to Preston about that property, Lee, and he was going to be writing a letter. So I would assume that that has been done by now. I will follow up with him in the morning and, and find out where that was at. Because I know when you called me, I talked to him that day and he was going to be issuing a letter.
Okay, that's super.
I'll confirm if that's happening.
Just as long as it's, thank you, Julie.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, Bill Lindsey. I just had one question. Will there be a lien placed against that property in behalf of the town? Because before the town buys the property, the owner would still be responsible for the cleanup. I'm looking because it's, we had just mentioned, the Margamat at one time was a property that had a concern. And yes, there was a requirement before the state came in at all of an expenditure of $10,000 by the owners before it could go forward. And it took a great, great deal of time, I will tell you, to get that property cleaned up. And the state also required tremendous amount of monitoring. The monitoring.
Select Board, I don't know what these are.
Somebody needs to mute, please.
Susan, yeah, thank you, Susan.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bill.
The, the monitor, the monitoring was eventually paid for by the state, but that took a considerable amount of time. So my concern here is the expedience in which if the town takes over a property, how long will this be an ongoing thing? Because it's very, it was very difficult to get the cooperation of the state to view the property, and they put in test wells as, as such. Now, some of these properties that are considered junk properties, the Margamat itself was a contained piece of property with a known fuel that had spilled into the ground. Some of the properties that would be on this list, it would appear, would have a variety of contaminations and maybe not just confined to one particular product. So, this is something I think people will be interested in. And I want, also I'm interested that there'll be no additional encouragement for the town to continue to do this. Because that does concern that we will have a bunch of properties that people just walk away and kind of let the town take over. And so I have that concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Oh, sorry, okay. Then, Stormwater Master Plan, so Agency of Natural Resources reached out in the regional planning to participate in a state program of creating a master plan for our stormwater system. We've had mapping done of different sections in the town over the years, but this is a master plan, no expense to the town. This is something the state is working on. They'll map the remaining sections and kind of link it all together to one maintenance plan. A new program, they're looking for towns to sign up to be a part of it. They've done some mapping of Chester already. So, more to come on that again. New program. They reached out to me, so they're going to be sending me some more information.
What we have on file now is just mapping of like Mountain View back then, when we had those issues?
Correct. And there's spots, like there's some of the depots mapped, the stormwater, and there's some of South Main that's mapped. But the whole stormwater system for the town is not mapped. There's gaps throughout. This would be, finish that mapping and then it would be a master plan that would link it together and then have a maintenance schedule. And, you know, if the state's going to pay for it and do it, then I'll be happy to receive it.
It definitely needs to be done.
It needs to be done, exactly. And they're apparently doing it throughout the state, but they're selecting, I think, 10 towns at a time.
Yeah.
And we were one of the ones selected. Probably because we're close to being done, but, yeah.
Some of our stormwater pipes are clay and they're broken, and some are metal and they're rotted and...
Yeah. So that'll be a nice, nice for us. And then Vermont Forestry Foundation, the property next to the pinnacle. I have, in anticipation that it would be on the agenda this evening, I had spoken with Rob O'Halloran, who is the president of the Forestry Foundation, and I had also talked to Michael Sersosimo, as they have a right of way. Learned that the property is actually under contract with a young man from Washington State who is looking to purchase it. Looks, very strong contract, looks like it will go through. Young man just looking to put a small camp on, on the 34 acres. So when he, when that contract does go through and we get the paperwork in, I'll plan to reach out to him and introduce ourselves as the town and my understanding is that he is aware of, you know, that people walk on the property, you know, the snowmobile trail, and, and at this point, he has no concerns about, he has no plans to change the use of, of what we're doing now. So, once we see that paperwork come through, I will reach out and introduce myself. That's all I have for old business.
I had a question that came up with some, some folks that I was talking to. On the Brookside Trail, the bridge and the grant, what, what's the status of that grant? I mean, is that, has it been awarded?
No. So that's the VORIC grant. They pushed award to early February, so we should be hearing very soon. We should be hearing very soon. Yes. And actually, I need to get back in touch with Gary. He emailed me.
What's that?
I need to get back in touch. The Conservation Committee did reach out and wanted to get together once we got an award on that, so I will reach back out to...
Well, that's where the questions came.
I will reach back out to that member. Yep, yep. Tell him I'm sorry. I will reach out tomorrow.
Thank you, Julie. You've got a lot going on.
Yeah.
And the solar farm will be on our...
Solar farm, I'm hoping will be on the next agenda. Jim is not positive he's going to get to that review prior. If not, he, it's in his hands. He is looking through stuff. It may be the first one in March. It's coming. Hopefully, it'll be on for the next one.
All right, great. Does anybody on the Select Board have any questions or any topics of old business?
Not at this time, Arnie, thanks.
Everybody else is okay?
Good.
All good? The next item on our agenda, which we decided to carry for the next two meetings, this meeting and the next meeting, is a discussion regarding the cannabis opt-in vote. And we're basically doing this to get as much information out there as we can, to answer as many questions as we can before the vote comes out on town meeting, so that people can make an informed decision about the vote. It, it seems like there's probably going to be some items that the state's not going to have decided until, it seems like one of the dates is April 1st. It seems like it's a pretty big date with some of the decisions on there. But there is quite a bit out there with the law as it stands now regarding how it all works, how it affects all the different tiers, about growing, not growing, I mean, opting in or not opting in. As far as a town's concerned, and I've been going over quite a bit of this material as far as the law goes, we have the option of opting in or opting out for retail sales only. The growing, the manufacturing, the processing, all that is going to be allowed no matter what a town says. They can't opt out of that part of the, the legislation. They do, we do have the option to opt in or opt out regarding retail sales. My understanding is that at this time, there is absolutely no tax benefit revenue that would come our way. There is a bill, I think, that was introduced recently to possibly try to garner 1% to 4% to go back to the towns, but that's not the case as we stand right now. Maybe that will change in the future, maybe it won't. But as, as we speak now, there is no tax benefit whatsoever. The way it works with the town when it comes to placement of a facility like this, we cannot, we're not allowed as a town to make any special laws or rules or regulations pertaining just to cannabis. It has to be treated like a retail establishment. So any zoning laws that we have or rules and regulations or however that pertain to retail establishments would pertain to a cannabis retail establishment. The only difference being is that there is that statement about being, I forget where I had that material, in proximity to a school.
Right.
And I think that was...
It was 500 feet.
Yeah, and it's actually a state law.
Actually, that was a question I had. How far distant will this retailer be from school property? Because it's not very far to the elementary school.
No. So on the guidelines, it says buffer zones. And it says cannabis retailers cannot operate if they would, if the store would be on a property that abuts a school property, and if the retail operations would occur within 500 feet of the school property.
Correct.
So that's basically the guidelines that we have, and it seems like that would be the only qualifying factor for cannabis as opposed to retail in general. So, I mean, that's the only other guideline that's in there. So, we have this on the agenda, and it's for people to have comments, concerns, or questions. If we can answer the questions, we'll answer them, and if we can't, we'll, we'll try to find the answer. Our goal is just to inform the public as much as we can regarding this issue, so that when the vote does come up, they'll have all the information that we have as a town and that they constantly have as a citizen, too. So at this point, I would open it up to the Select Board or anybody in the public or out on Zoom that would like to, has a question or a comment or a concern or anything regarding this issue.
I have a couple.
Arnie? It's Heather.
Go ahead, Heather.
Um, with the, with the issue pertaining to the school, is it the school zone or is it the school property?
Well, I believe they call it a school zone and then it's that 500-foot buffer.
I think it was called the school property. I'm looking in my forms right now.
In the, in the guidance, Heather?
Yeah.
It says, "Under board rules, a retail cannabis establishment cannot operate in any location where it would be a violation of the drug-free school zone law to sell a regulated drug." This means cannabis retailers cannot operate if the store would be on a property that abuts a school property, and if the retail operations would occur within 500 feet of the school property.
So it's the property, not the zone. But they did, that was unclear to me. Thanks.
But I thought that included not just schools per se, but...
Recording stopped.
Any place where children gather, like...
Youth congregant or something.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I think that's where we get into this drug-free school zone law, and I think we need to get understanding of what that is.
Okay.
So that, that would...
Recording in progress.
That would be a good question, and how it regulates. Because I have the Vermont statute online regarding the drug zone, you know, around schools and stuff. And it, and it basically just says the same thing. It doesn't say anything about youth congregating and stuff. It just says schools and it says 500 feet. But what you're mentioning about youth congregating was brought up somewhere. It, it came from somewhere.
And, and that's more than just schools, you know, it's churches or whatever, you know, it's...
I mean, it, it depends on how you interpret that at that point.
Okay, I just, I just don't want to leave into gray areas if we get into this.
So that would be a good question to get that answered, because that's the second time that's come up on exactly what that means, that, that's part of it.
Arnie, can I jump in here for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Lee.
So, one of the questions that I had, I was searching for an answer and I could not find it, and that is, it seems like alcohol sales are limited to, or have to be outside of a 1,200-foot from school property? And so it seems to me that if the al, sale of alcohol can't occur within 1,200 feet, I'm not sure why cannabis would be less than that. And I never could find the answer to that question anywhere, and I'm not sure where else to look.
I'll email the...
But that's, that's another question I would have.
I'll email the, I'll email VLCT, the legal department tomorrow and ask. I'm sure they know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And especially with that, that alcohol question on there, too. Why would that be different? If there is such, if there is such a guideline or a rule or, because the, the Vermont statute regarding the, the, the drug part of it doesn't even mention alcohol. Just, it talks about regulated drugs and things like that, and it's on school grounds and within the 500 feet. But that would be another good question.
I'll, I'll email the legal department tomorrow. Yep.
One thing that concerns me is that you, you said that, and anything I've seen, is we can't stop them from growing cannabis anywhere. I think A and R is dropping the ball there, because they're, they're on top of wastewater or they're on top of water, and what a lot of cannabis growers, the chemicals and stuff they use can be detrimental to the groundwater system. So, I think they need to be addressing that and making sure that it's not going to be a problem in, you know, in getting into the groundwater where you don't want it. But they, I mean, they're not even going to let us have any say in the matter. Now, that bothers me.
There, in, in the, in the state statute, there are sections that pertain to pesticides and all the chemicals that would be personal. And they reference it regarding agriculture. And they put it in the same part there as, as agriculture. So it would be the same guidelines that apply to agriculture would apply also to the cannabis growing part.
Okay.
Arnie, a lot of the, a lot of the systems that I've seen, the growers are indoors, and because of that, they're using an enormous amount of energy. I read somewhere that the amount of energy that's used by the marijuana industry right now is equivalent of a whole state, I believe. I can't remember exact numbers. But it's incredible, the amount of energy that's used for growing. So, it may not be outdoors, but the problem is that the pesticides, the herbicides, the fertilizers, other things that go into the growing and the processing of marijuana is very detrimental to the environment. And if we don't have any say over how that happens in our town, I think that's a huge issue that we need to bring up with the legislature.
All right, Lee. The, part of the, the growing part there, it, you know, we consider Vermont a farm state, and we actually encourage small farms and growing and things. So if they're going to be under the same guidelines as regular agriculture would be, I, I don't get the connection between having to worry about the fact that the pesticides or what they use to help grow the cannabis or how that works. Now, when you say pesticide, that's always, it's like a scare word almost. Pesticides could be natural, they could be bad, I mean, there's all different classifications of a pesticide, too. So, I mean, there is some regulations in that document that pertain to those questions that you have there. Who has the final say on it? I couldn't exactly figure it out when I was reading through. What I imagine the Agency of National Resources does, or whatever agency regulates regular farms would also probably be involved in what goes on on cannabis-growing facilities, too.
And I think that's one of the questions we need to ask to, just to inform ourselves and the voters
Okay.
about this whole process.
Agreed. Definitely agreed. To have some more clarity on that, because it is a concern. The one thing that I did see on a lot of the information was, when we talk about energy use and we talk about commercial cannabis growing and all that stuff, when I look at the tiers and the size of outdoor cultivation and even indoor cultivation, and in the, in the beginning, they're not going to even have the tier six, which is the biggest growing establishment allowed, which is 37,000 square feet. Now, an acre is 43,000 square feet, so you're talking three quarters of an acre, and that's not even going to be allowed in the beginning. So the next tier down is basically a half an acre indoors, and I believe it's almost the same on the outdoor one, too. So, it seems like the state, whether it's good or bad, is trying to maintain this on a smaller scale as opposed to big commercialized industrial cannabis growing along those lines. You know, you could debate whether that's good or bad size-wise or whether it's good or bad in general, but I was glad to see that it seems like they're trying to limit it, the size and the industrialization of the cannabis part, to give more small farmers a chance to do it on a small scale. Anybody else have any questions, concerns, or something that we need some answers to for, to get, try to get through this and get the information out to the public?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have an observation, I believe. For several years, and the cannabis plant, you know, we're talking about marijuana, we're talking about cannabis, but I think here, right here in Chester, for several years, we've had people who have grown cannabis, not, and doesn't have, you take apart the, the plant somehow, so you don't cultivate for the marijuana, just for the cannabis, for other reasons. It's like a farming product.
The CBDs and things like that, the, the non, the part that does, yeah, yes.
Okay. So, you know, we already, we already have those. To my knowledge, we've had them for several years.
Yep.
Those farms, if you will.
It has been. And, and I don't know what the rules and regulations are regarding CBD and all that, because this particular law that I, that we've been looking at and trying to wrap our heads around is basically seems like it's regarding cannabis as far as psychotropic properties or whatever, however they, whatever, however you say that. Uh, Scott Blair, you have your hand up?
Yeah, hey, guys. I just want to, on that last comment that you made, so CBD
Yep.
and the cannabis laws that are coming out are totally two different things, because CBD is a retail and it's from the hemp plant?
Yes.
Where the full cannabis is, the THC is coming from marijuana. I just want to clear that up, just so you know.
That, that's right. Thanks, Scott. I, I, it is the hemp plant. You're absolutely right. I couldn't figure out the name for it.
Thank you, Scott. Susan, do you have your hand up there?
Robert, you does, too.
Robert, do you have your hand up? Robert, do you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Arnie. I, I wanted to make a, a couple of comments if I could.
Sure.
Based on conversations I've had with other people in the community, which, uh, has been a kind of a learning experience for me. Um, I think there's a lot of misinformation kind of floating around out there about what this opt-in vote really is about. It's definitely not a referendum on whether cannabis is good or bad, or whether it should be legal or illegal. Um, and as you mentioned, it's not a, a vote on whether or not Chester farmers can grow cannabis or process it or test it, because those are all resolved issues and the town really has no authority over those anyhow. It really is about a very narrow carve out that the legislator, legislature did, which was giving the towns the opportunity to opt in for retail sales. Um, and, and I've begun to look at this, it not whether or not Chester wants to opt in, but really when it wants to opt in, because I think if you take a long-term vision, in five or 10 years, a lot of communities might opt in. So it's really more relevant to me and the people I've talked to is about when Chester would want to opt in. Um, and there's been a lot of talk about the urgency of this. Obviously we have a petitioner and who submitted a petition, has the necessary signatures and that's fine. But I think there, people think that there's some urgency to this and there's an urgency to either opt in on March 1st or somehow lose the opportunity, um, when in fact, there is no deadline, there's no use it or lose it, uh, aspect to this. The urgency is coming from the petitioner, which is fine. The petitioner has a business plan and all of that. Um, but when you put this in perspective and you say, we have one petitioner and you have 5% of the population who has signed, or 5% of the voters who have signed the petition, that's a very small minority of the, of the residents of Chester. So I, I, I think it would be, it would behoove the community not to inherit the urgency. Um, you know, so if there's an urgency of 5% of the population to get this opted in quickly, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be the urgency of the 3,000 residents of Chester. And I, I just think that that is an, an important point. Um, and I think in terms of urgency, it's important to look at the fact that 90% of the towns, of the 237 or whatever it is towns in Vermont have not voted to opt in. So again, there's a very small percentage that have. So we have a small percentage of our population pushing us to opt in to a situation and be like a very small percentage of the state. Um, and it doesn't mean we don't want to opt in at one point, um, but we don't have to opt in on March 1st. We can opt in in July or August or December or a year from now or two years from now. We don't lose that opportunity. The difference is, right now, there's nothing for us to look at. There are no retail cannabis dispensaries in Vermont that we can go look at, see what they look like. We can't talk to the neighbors, we can't talk to the community, we can't say to the select board, have you encountered any issues? How have you overcome them? How responses, responsive has the cannabis review board been to you? None of that information exists. So if we were diligent, um, we might want to opt in, but I think it would make much more sense to opt in when this has shaken out and we have much more information to draw on in terms of what the impacts are on our community. And the other thing I wanted to mention is there's been a lot of folks making comparison between alcohol, liquor sales and cannabis. Um, and, and I would suggest that they're not very similar. And for one really big reason, which is, um, the town has no control over cannabis. Uh, it does have control over alcohol. Uh, the town cannot issue, suspend or revoke a cannabis license. So there's not a whole lot that is similar to alcohol in a community, and I think that should be considered. Um, and the last point I wanted to make was about control. And we've talked about this, about towns having very little control. And as been mentioned to us, it really comes down to zoning. And our zoning predates the whole cannabis issue. And if you look at our zoning, um, as it is today, we could have cannabis dispensaries in residential districts like residential R20, uh, in the stone district, certainly in, in, uh, the village center and in commercial areas. Yet we can't go to another town and say, hey, do you have any cannabis retailers in a residential district and how's it working out? Because we don't have that information. So if we opt in on March 1st, all of these unanswered questions, we're basically going to be hoping for the best. And I think it would just be premature. Uh, I, I think we should be deliberate and informed, um, and we should follow the lead of 90% of the towns in Vermont, which is collecting information, waiting for the industry to shake out, see what it looks like, and then make our decision. So I would encourage the voters not to opt in on March 1st, but certainly consider as a possibility going forward.
Arnie, this is Lee. Can I make a, a comment on what Robert just said?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Rob, for those comments. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Rob. I, I couldn't agree with you more. The only thing I would suggest is that there are other states that have a history with this and California being one of them, Colorado being another, and they are now having buyer's remorse relative to marijuana sales. So we don't have to look too far to find history. And I agree with you that we should hold off on opting in, uh, but I think there is history out there that we can look at relative to how it's working out for people.
Thank you, Lee. Uh, Mr. Roper, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I just did a little quick scan of the VLCT's guidance to municipalities document that was discussed in the previous, uh, select board meeting. I won't read the whole thing to you, but I will add that there hasn't been any discussion that I recall about forming a local cannabis control commission. Uh, Mr. Need mentioned that the town does have control over liquor licenses and the town could also opt to have the same type of control over cannabis license. I'll just read a, a little bit of it here. Local commission may issue and administer local control licenses and may condition licenses on compliance with zoning bylaws, uh, signs or public nuisances. The local commission may also deny, suspend or revoke a local control license if it violates conditions placed on the license. So I just, uh, think it's important to include that information in this discussion. The town can choose to have a higher degree of control if they would like. Uh, one, one other point, um, I did some internet searching this morning trying to find feedback from other communities where cannabis, uh, retail cannabis has been, um, a fact of their lives for some number of years or some length of time. And I couldn't find a single article where a municipality said that they wish they had not allowed retail cannabis. So I, I think it's important that if we're going to cite, uh, instances, that there'd be something to back that up. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roper.
Next, I don't know who.
What's that?
That lady has my hand up. I don't know.
Uh, there's someone, I, I can't make out the name from here. Uh, it's just a still picture with her hand up. Jeff?
Yes, hi. Uh, Andy Goldman. Andy.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, um, I agree with Mr. Roper on a couple of points and I did put my hand up on before. As far as places to ask, I think what's very relevant for us here is look at New England, Massachusetts and Maine, we can ask and we can help you find quotes that, um, not only is there not buyer's remorse, in Massachusetts, the highest officer for cannabis control has actually said that all of the fear mongering did not actually realize itself. Um, also as far as buyer's remorse for California and Colorado, I have worked in the legal cannabis industry in both states or have been involved in both states and can tell you that is absolutely not correct. They are enjoying the tax money tremendously and in California, their biggest issue is trying to transfer illicit cannabis into the legal markets.
Excuse me. Andy, could you, could you, um, introduce yourself and give me some context of who you are?
Sure. I've been working in the legal cannabis industry, uh, investing since 2014 and working in it since 2015. Um, I am, uh, very vocal about the, uh, I was a lender to healthcare companies prior to entering to legal cannabis and I entered legal cannabis because of the healthcare aspects of legal cannabis and that it is far safer than illicit cannabis because it is tested.
It, I, I have another question. Can you please give me, give me your name again and are you a Chester resident?
I am not a Chester resident. My name is Andy Goldman, G O L D M A N. I'm passionate about this issue and educating people on, uh, what this plant does and what the legal markets are, uh, from experience that, um, I seem to have more than many in the, in, in the region.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
If, if, I have a question. Back to Mr. Roper's comment about, um, the town has the opportunity to opt in. If my, my understanding to have a board, cannabis control board, my understanding is if the vote goes that they, the voters want us to opt in, then we pretty much have to set up a control board through the select board, correct?
My understanding is by default, it is the select board.
Well, it is if we want it. We do not have to do that and then the state would just take that responsibility over. It's not required.
I don't necessarily want it, but I would, we should be able to say whether, just like liquor licenses, yea or nay, if, if there's been violations or whatever, problems there, just like with a, with a bar or something, that the police chief comes in, yeah, there's been a lot of bar fights, whatever.
Yeah. Then the select board would want to form itself.
So, so we can appoint the select board as being the liquor commissioner, I mean, the cannabis commissioners
Correct.
Just like the liquor commissioners are, or we can appoint, appoint a board specifically for that purpose.
Right. Because we haven't decided to opt in yet.
That's right. We don't have to opt in.
Yep. Mr. Lindsay?
Yeah, I've heard, uh,
And, yeah, it's Heather.
Hang on, Heather. One, one second. I just had Bill Lindsay head up to the microphone. Be right with
Oh, sorry. I can't see.
Okay.
That's okay. Um, I'm trying to understand both sides of the, the issue here. And one that seems to be neglected is what tools has law enforcement been given if we have erratic behavior of a driver? Uh, there was some discussion about this a couple of years ago with the state and the tests that were available to law enforcement were coming out of Pennsylvania and had not yet been fully perfected. So I'm, I guess my question is, what tools are we giving law enforcement for erratic behavior from the smoking of marijuana? Thank you.
So that's, that's a question that we could probably ask our chief cloud to see if anything has changed over the time and to try to get an answer to that. Thank you. Because I don't know. Unless you can help us out, Jeff?
I'm not going to comment on it because I'm just, I just
No, I understand.
No, it's just, I have my own opinions and I just
That's fine. I don't want, I, I didn't mean to put you on
No, that's just fine. That's
Uh, anyone else, uh, with any questions or comments, concerns on this topic? We've got a list of, I think, three or four different questions that we're going to try to get the answers to for our next meeting. I mean, and
I think Heather had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Heather. Go ahead.
No, um, guys, I was just going to comment that it was after Lee Dakin said something about opting in or opting out. It's not as if this is the only moment in time we can opt in. And, um, so that's all I really wanted to say. So it was just a comment. We, we can opt in later on and opting out, once you opt in is also an option, but all, all licenses, my understanding is everyone who had the ability to sell it would be grandfathered in. And I guess that's part of, um, you know, my concern is that if we can't limit it to five retail stores, 25 real sto, um, retail stores. So that's just an entry, you know, we just don't know yet. And there's a lot that, um, we can look for in other states, Colorado, Mass, Maine. But in Vermont, um, we won't know until a year or two what other communities are thinking. So that's all I had to say, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Heather.
Arnie, can I make a couple of comments and ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Uh, so I, I want to respond to what Tim and Andy said, uh, relative to buyer's remorse and, uh, communities not necessarily being, uh, happy with the choices that were made. I, uh, published and sent out to the rest of the board, a 15-page document that had copious notes and links, uh, related to this particular, uh, subject. And I've collected a whole, another list of websites where, uh, communities in California and Colorado are regretting, uh, the choices that have been made. So if either of you would like me to send you that information, I'd be happy to do it. Um, the other thing is that, uh, local control, um, I'm not sure that the municipal guidance document that was given to us right before our last meeting is actually codified or would be part of the laws, because I saw nothing related to local control, uh, options for municipalities in any of the rules. That was just a guidance document. So I'm not going to take that at face value until it's actually, uh, been promoted as one of the rules. And then lastly is a question of, um, do we have control over alcohol sales at the Sunoco as part of the state, uh, liquor store? Or is that something that we just accepted and we have no way of controlling or getting rid of that if we wanted to?
Well, when, when they talk about the liquor, uh, our responsibilities as liquor commissioners for the town, and they, and they say that it's related, uh, we could also do that on the cannabis side of it. I think our control for even the liquor part of it is very limited.
Right.
It's, it's basically, or if there's trouble, if there's, if there's, uh, violations and, you know, selling to minors or it's causing a public nuisance or that kind of thing. So it's really not a control that can help us put things where we would like them if that was, if that was the intention. It was, it's more of a reactionary control if there's trouble. So, you know, yeah, it's some power, but I, I think it's, it's pretty limited when it comes to being able to really address any, a lot of the issues that we're talking about. It seems like it's more of a reactionary thing. And that's basically what the, what we as a board do as liquor commissioners, and I think it would translate the same way as a board as, uh, if we had a cannabis, you know, commission, same type of thing.
To answer Lee's question, we have no sign, we we've never signed a license for the state liquor store. So let, you know, that's, I don't have any control there. And the only thing that I've seen out of all the information that I've read through, just like everybody else, my eyes get tired and, but, um, the only money that, that the town is going to see is if we do, if we are told, we have, they want us to opt in and we have to form a cannabis commission, the only thing we can do is, I think it's like this, even the state is limiting what we can charge for a license. And I think it's like a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars. We don't get any of the tax money out of any of the, the sales or any of that. So there's very little financial benefit to us at this point. So that's, that's all I've seen. And, and if they got together, uh, got their stuff together and got some more pertinent information out there that we can make better decisions, it would be nice.
But we don't have that regu- regulatory power on any retail establishment.
No.
I mean, we can't decide whether to allow one or not because we don't get revenue from it and stuff. This one seems a little bit different compared to a regular retail, but according to the state, it isn't.
Right.
And that's what we're going by.
Excuse me. I don't know if you want to entertain more comments or questions, but Tim Roper and Andy Goldman both have their hands up again.
Tim?
Tim made some comments in the chat.
No, sorry.
No, sorry, I just didn't take my hand down, but I did copy and paste into the chat the section from the VLCT guidance document.
Recording stopped.
Look at that. And I also included the link to that document there. That's all. I'll take my hand.
Recording in progress.
We're having a little.
Yeah, Tim, as I said before, unfortunately, that guidance document has no basis in reality as far as what the Cannabis Control Board is publishing, so I would take that with a grain of salt.
Anyone else for comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Roper is correct. This is Andy Goldman. It's actually in the past law, the Act 164, that's been passed. It's not just in the guidance, that the municipalities can set up their own local commission. And importantly, to another comment, is that commission may suspend or revoke a local control license, so that it's not just the state. If you want to set it up, you can control it even more than alcohol. And that's the past legislation.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman.
Sure.
I see another hand up, but I can't read the name from here. Jeff, can you see that name?
Susan.
Susan?
Oh, thanks. I finally found my new quote. Is it inappropriate for me to ask how Ms. Goldman found her way to this meeting? She's not a resident of Chester. Is she an employee in the cannabis industry?
Ms. Goldman, would you like to speak to that?
I'd be more than happy to. We live in Ludlow, and we are very much about education, and would like a safe alternative to cannabis in the region. Ludlow said no, and we are supporting every other town that is voting on it. And most importantly, it's very important to us that correct information is out there, so we're just doing our civic duty. And if it's Chester, we will be purchasing from Chester. And also, by the way, there is also, you know, the control board has said there might, the recommended, the recommendations are 1% to 2% of the excise taxes. If that goes through, and now there's a bill, I guess, 1% to 4%, the town could make a lot of money. And it's also, you bring other business to the town, so the town can really benefit. People don't have to make that turn off to Ludlow, they could stay in Chester and benefit all your businesses. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Susan?
Yeah, I'm sorry. One of the questions I had, Ms. Goldman, is, are you employed in the industry?
I am self-employed. I manage a cannabis-only investment fund, and I'm an advisor in the industry, so the answer is yes. I'm actually full-time in the legal cannabis industry, and have been since 2015, investing since 2014.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the candid answer. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Anybody else have a hand up? Well, we have about three or four questions that we're going to be trying to find out our answers to for our next meeting. I appreciate everybody coming and having input into this important discussion, and I think it'll help guide our town when it comes to the vote. And it's going to be up to the people to decide where they want to go with this issue. The next item on our agenda, isn't that controversial? It's our certificate of highway miles that we do every year, and it's just a verification for state aid, I believe, to, it has an influence on how we, how many miles we have, and what goes on with that, Julie? Is that the case?
Yeah, we have no changes this year, so all we are doing is signing.
All the roads are still the roads?
All the roads are still the roads. We have not added or deleted. No, you just need to sign it.
So it's just a little housekeeping, just a couple of signatures. Jeff and me will have a signature on here, but we're going to need a few more.
And we don't need a motion?
No. We just sign. Can sign.
I'll come in tomorrow, Julie.
Thank you.
I will as well, Julie.
Thank you.
Again, if I need to.
I just need three, Lee, so if Lee or Heather stop in, you should be good.
Lee, you don't sound too good. You sound a little hoarse.
That's why I'm here instead of there.
Thank you.
I hope you're feeling better, Lee.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is appointment to the Regional Emergency Planning Committee, and Julie, can you help us out on this?
Sure. So each, there were, in the region, several local emergency planning committees. The state has come in and changed that, lessened the number, made them more regional. This is regarding if there was another Irene, another, or some form of a catastrophic regional event that took place. So there are these regional emergency management districts that are set up. This is new, and so the formulation of the new regional board is being set up. So they are asking that each town appoint two people. One, the emergency management director, which is a town's town manager, and the second is either the head of police, fire, or emergency medicine. So in speaking with Matt, and Amanda, and Rick, they have all decided that Rick would probably be the best to appoint to the committee. So we're asking that you appoint myself and Rick to the regional emergency management committee. And that does need to be a motion.
I will make the.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Julie Hance as the director and Rick Cloud as the second person on board.
I'll second it.
So Lee Dakin is the motion, and Jeff Holden is the second, that we appoint Julie Hance and Chief Rick Cloud to our Regional Emergency Planning Committee. Any further discussion on this? This basically goes with that plan that we sign every year that has all the phone numbers and all the information on it.
Correct.
And they're just making it regional as opposed to just local.
There's an effort throughout the state to, it's no surprise to anybody, to start regionalizing. So I have been in some meetings with, you know, Springfield, and Weathersfield, and Ludlow, you know, where, you know, when we bring, and with our new facility, you know, when we bring somebody down from the state to do training for our fire department, we should be reaching out to Springfield, and Weathersfield, and Ludlow to say, "Hey, do you want to come participate in this resource?" It's that type of thing. That's the reason that they've started forming the regional. It's too expensive of an industry for every town to be footing the bill completely on its own. So it's the start of this regional effort.
I think it's long overdue. I mean, we've always done mutual aid for fire emergencies like that, so why wouldn't we be doing it?
It makes sense expense-wise, and it makes sense.
And when people work together, they're used to what's going to happen, and things go smoother, so.
Training together, they'll work together more smooth, for sure.
Yep.
Good point. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next item is Future Agenda Items: New Business. Anything anybody would like to see on future Select Board agendas?
I'm assuming we're going to have another discussion about the cannabis?
Yes, that's going to be on next time, for sure. Yep. We'll try to get those answers to those, I believe there's four or five questions that we have, that we have to delve into a little more, but correct, yep. And it looks like February 16th, Solar Farm, if the information's going to be there, possibly ARPA funding, and the wayfinding grant approval. So that sounds like a.
Is that another one? Didn't we have a wayfinding?
So we did, the wayfinding plan was adopted a couple of years ago. I had talked at one point about, we were waiting for these downtown transportation funds. That grant has opened up. That process requires sign-off by the Planning Commission. They'll be meeting on Monday. I'll be talking to them on Monday about their signature part of it, and then it will be to the Select Board to sign the resolution. Basically, both entities need to give approval to.
Okay, this is technically just another grant.
This would, this would fund the plan that the previous grant, so we had a grant that paid to have the wayfinding plan done. Then I went to the Transportation and Information Council, that whole nightmare that we went through, finally got it approved. This is the grant funding that will actually put the signs in the ground.
Okay. All right. I get it.
And that is the big question. When are the signs going to?
Oh, for crying out loud, this process has taken way too long.
It's unreal.
I know. We picked the colors how long ago?
Oh, good lord. What a process. What a process.
It really.
But anyways, it's a 100%, potentially 100% funding, could give us a couple hundred thousand dollars to get them all in, so it's a huge grant.
I guess it's worth it to jump through all the hoops.
Absolutely.
To the tune of a couple of hundred thousand. It'd taken a little longer than we thought, but when it's, when you're talking that kind of money, that's, that's a piece of change for a small town, for sure.
It is.
Anybody else have anything for future agendas? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter regarding Thompson Road.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff's the motion, and Lee Dakin is the second. All those in favor of going into executive session to discuss Thompson Road, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.